This Tuesday evening on June 20th. I hope everyone had a happy Juneteenth. I now call this meeting to order. Deputy Clerk, would you please call the roll?
With pleasure, Mayor. Councilmember Hedges.
Here.
Councilmember Lorraine?
Here.
Councilmember Newsom?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Diaz Nash?
Here.
Mayor Lee?
Here. We're excited to be here in person with options for those who choose not to be in person to participate virtually. There are several ways to participate. For those attending in person, please complete a yellow Request to Speak slip and hand it to our city clerk or deputy clerk. If participating remotely, use the Raise Your Hand feature in Zoom and you'll be called on at the appropriate time. If calling in via phone, press *9 to raise your hand and then when called upon, press *6 to unmute. These options for public comment will remain available until I close the public comment period for each specific item. We have agreed to open it up to public comment and providing an exception in this case, given we have a number of guests who would like to speak. So can we open public comment, please?
Yes, we will begin with the speaker slips that have been provided. If there are any members of the public who wish to speak, please submit a yellow speaker slip at your soonest opportunity. We will begin with the first speaker, who is John Oldrich Jr. It will be followed by Dina Sultan and Carla RTB.
How many speakers do we have?
I have four speaker slips.
Okay, so what we'll be providing...
We're gonna do three minutes per speaker.
Three minutes, okay, great.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, Council. I'm John Oldrich Jr. I'm an employee of the San Mateo City Library. I've been an aide in the Children's Department for six and a half years. And I'm here tonight to support the request for higher wage increases. And I'll be brief in my comments just to say, as a senior, I'm on fixed income. And I'm going into savings at this time. And that's also related to higher, much higher costs of living in a number of areas, food, shelter, and so forth. And with that, I'll conclude. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Dina Sultan, followed by Carla RTB.
My name is Donya Sultani. I'm a project read program coordinator at the library, which is a literacy program. I'm here today to ask for your support in increasing the pay for library staff. I'm concerned that the entry level position for a general unit with fewer responsibilities are more than unpaid as a supervisor. It is demoralizing, actually. As a longtime resident and dedicated city employee for 27 years, I have always taken immense pride in working for this great organization until recently. Recruitment of qualified staff and retention is very much a concern. We need competitive pay rates to be able to retain staff and hire new people. So please ask city management to address our pay and staffing concerns. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Carla RTB, followed by Mary Alexander. And I have two speaker slips for Mary Alexander.
Hi, my name is Carla Avatabaly, and I'm a librarian too at the San Mateo Public Library. I've been working for the city of San Mateo for about, coming up on five and a half years. I'm mostly a teen librarian, and contrary to popular belief, we don't just sit around reading all day. I have many responsibilities. I am a public-facing employee. I work directly with the public, assisting them with various reference questions. I developed a collection in five collection areas with a budget of $35,000 a year. I also recently brought $10,000 in an LSTA grant to the city of San Mateo. And I feel very valued by my community that I serve. I do not feel valued at all by my employer. And I would also like to say, I feel like the budget negotiations have been very demeaning to us. And I feel that you don't consider someone like me to be an employee that you would like to retain. And when I look at what other jurisdictions pay their staff, I feel like there's not a lot of reason to stay when other opportunities come up. And I really hope that you take into consideration how we feel and, you know, we see what other units are getting in pay increases, and we understand the need for fiscal responsibility, but we'd like to see some fairness through all units, not just the library. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next speaker will be Mary Alexander.
My name is Mary Alexander, and I am here with my colleagues to provide a comment as both an employee of the city and as a resident. The issue of compensation affects everyone in San Mateo, not just library workers. Over the last calendar year, my department has been unable to hire any new staff. Aside from a supervisor that joined us in November, I am the only full-time employee in my department and have now been for a full year. We have held two separate recruitment panels, one last fall and one last month. We interviewed many candidates and extended the offer to several. None of them accepted our offer because the candidates had all been offered better-paying positions at other Bay Area libraries. For the second try at recruiting full-time positions last month, we again interviewed and offered the positions to several candidates. Again, the candidates refused because they had already accepted better offers. We have had to extend offers to our third, fourth, and fifth choices. We do not want to compromise the quality of our staff. We want to hire the most qualified people, and we are offering full-time positions to people who have not even graduated from library school. That is unprecedented and a move made out of desperation. So if we compromise the quality of the people that we are hiring, then we're compromising the quality of our services, and that trickles down into what we are offering the people of San Mateo. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we have no further public comment.
Thank you so much for coming. State law prevents the council from taking actions on any items that are not on the agenda, but we really do appreciate you showing up and speaking up. And I think we all appreciate the fact that our services are reliant on people. And without the people doing this work for the community, we cannot maintain the San Mateo way. So thank you for being here. We are going to move on to our first agenda item. It is, number one, train horn noise status update. Looks like we have a presentation from our senior engineer, Tina Pham.
Hello, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Tina Pham, and I'm a senior engineer in public works. This presentation will provide an update on the city's efforts to reduce the impact of train horn noise in San Mateo, which has long been identified as a city council priority. Since we have limited time this evening, I'll move through the slides fairly quickly, but there will be an opportunity at the end to revisit them if desired. This is the agenda for my presentation. I'll start with train horn noise background information to give context and frame our discussion. This will include a summary of current operations at train crossings. Next, I'll explain federal regulations pertaining to train horn noise. I'll briefly discuss what is a quiet zone and what is a process for a city to establish a quiet zone. I'll then discuss city staff's progress since our last city council study session in January 2020. Lastly, I'll share recommended steps and take questions. Safety along the railroad is extremely important because trains are very heavy and cannot swerve to avoid collisions. Train collisions have serious consequences, especially at crossings where pedestrians, vehicles, and trains need to move through the same space. Train horns serve a purpose because they provide an audible warning, which reduces the risk of collisions but improves safety. But this noise negatively impacts the quality of life for nearby residents, especially during 19 hours. Thus, the goal in San Mateo is to seek balance. We want to limit train horns in order to improve the quality of life, but without increasing the risk of collisions. I'd like to emphasize here how challenging train crossings can be at at-grade crossings, which is defined as all modes of transportation intersecting at the same elevation. What is shown here is an aerial shot of First Avenue. As you can see, this is a dense area downtown. Imagine how difficult it would be to design and implement safe and cost-effective solutions that can minimize collisions while accommodating passenger rail, freight rail, vehicles, buses, bicyclists, and pedestrians. So now, if you look at the entire system map of railroad in San Mateo, you see that the First Avenue at-grade crossings is just one of eight similarly challenging at-grade crossings. San Mateo has the most at-grade crossings on the entire 77-mile Caltrain corridor. From north to south, these eight at-grade crossings are Villa Terrace, Bellevue Ave, First, Second, Third, Fourth, and Ninth Ave, and are shown here in yellow. Fourth and Fifth Ave crossings have an orange outline to indicate these crossings are currently under construction. Villa Terrace and Bellevue Ave crossings have purple outlines to indicate these crossings are being studied to determine what project should be implemented there. I will discuss the study results and staff recommendations later in this presentation. The crossings shown here in green are grade-separated crossings, where the trains are not required to sound their horns. Some history here. 25th Avenue Grade Separation Project, which converted three at-grade crossings to grade-separated crossings, was completed recently in 2021. This reduced train horn noise in the southern part of the city. Some more background. On the peninsula, commuter rail service is operated by Caltrain, and freight service is operated by Union Pacific Railroad. Caltrain is governed by the Peninsula Corridor Joint Powers Board, or JPB, and the names are sometimes used interchangeably, Caltrain, JPB. All at-grade crossings and warning devices in San Mateo are owned and operated by Caltrain. The city does not own or have jurisdiction over the railroad right-of-way or operations, and so the city needs to work with and coordinate with the railroads to further our train quiet zone efforts. The next couple slides are pictures illustrating our current operations. This is another picture of First Avenue, but at street level. I have highlighted here conventional warning lights and signage. Next, you'll see two gate arms for vehicles, what is commonly called two quadrant gates. There is one gate for each of the westbound and eastbound approaches. Lastly, you'll see pedestrian gate arms. This is all conventional rail safety infrastructure typical at all of our eight at-grade crossings. This is a picture of Third Avenue. This serves as an example of a crossing where a train is approaching. Here, you will see flashing warning lights and the two quadrant gates lowered. You can see that the gates typically only span half of the roadway to block oncoming traffic. Most common type of collision occurs when drivers believe there is no train coming, and thus they impatiently drive around the lowered gates. This is a picture of Fifth Avenue. In this picture, you'll see conventional warning lights, signage, and pedestrian gates. Here are the two quadrant gates. You will also see a concrete median here to discourage drivers from going around the gatearms. In this next slide, I'll summarize relevant train horn noise regulations. Railroads are governed by the Federal Railroad Administration, also known as the FRA. Regulations for sounding of the train horns are established in the Code of Federal Regulations, known as Train Horn Rule. FRA regulations require trains to sound horns when approaching all at-grade crossings, occupied station platforms, construction zones, and other emergency situations, such as when a trespasser is spotted in the railroad right-of-way. The conductors need to sound their train horns for a minimum of 15 to 20 seconds in advance, or roughly a quarter mile in advance, of these at-grade crossings. FRA regulations must be followed at all times in the day and night. There is an exception in the train horn rule, where cities can create quiet zones to limit the use of train horns. They do this by implementing certain safety improvements, as long as the risk of collisions is not increased by the restricted use of train horns. Now, I'll discuss what is a quiet zone. Establishing a quiet zone is an important city council priority and is what city staff have been working toward for years. A quiet zone is a section of rail at least half mile in length, in which routine sounding of train horns has been restricted when trains approach at-grade crossings. Only local governments may establish quiet zones, and they need to work in cooperation with the railroad companies, state, and federal authorities to assess potential increased risk of collisions. It's important to note that train horn restriction is not applicable in certain situations. For example, at Caltrain stations, rail yards, construction zones. Also, the restriction is not applicable during emergencies and does not apply to locomotive bells fixed at the crossings. For that reason, FRA even admits that a more appropriate description of a quiet zone would be a reduced train horn area, and that residents should not expect a total prohibition on train noise. As mentioned before, establishing a quiet zone is a council priority, and I will summarize recent staff efforts toward train quiet zone establishment in the next slide. Timeline of staff efforts. 2017 was the year train horn noise became a city council priority. In 2018, staff and council met with U.S.-elected officials. There have been many city council study sessions, such as in 2018, 2020, et cetera. In the last years, we have progressed Fourth and Fifth Avenue railroad crossing improvements projects and completed 25th Ave grade separation projects in 2021. And just this year, we have completed the traffic study for Villa Terrace and East Bellevue Ave. As previously mentioned, city staff have been working with railroads, state, and federal authorities to evaluate, design, and construct what the FRA calls supplementary safety measures, or SSMs, to qualify for a train quiet zone in San Mateo. To better explain the SSMs, I've included some example pictures. First SSM you see is a four-quadrant gate. This is an improvement upon the conventional two-quadrant gate I showed earlier. Four-quadrant gates completely block the full width of the roadway in both sides of the crossings, preventing cars from driving around the gates. Although installation of four-quadrant gates is an expensive option, this is one of the best ways to reduce collisions. Second SSM you see here are medians. As I mentioned previously, medians also discourage drivers from going around the gatearms. Third SSM is a railroad crossing closure. You see a dead-end cul-de-sac, which completely blocks off all modes of transportation across the railroad right-of-way. So a very safe option from a rail safety perspective, but it requires a lot of traffic analysis to evaluate how a closure may impact the surrounding neighborhood and community. Quiet Zone Qualification Approach. Staff's plan is reduce the risk of collision by installing SSMs at selected at-grade crossings. This is a risk-based approach. Per FRA, the city is required to prove that we have installed enough SSMs to lower our risk index, below a certain threshold set by the FRA, in order to qualify for a quiet zone. As you can see with the thermometer figure, lower risk index is better. So what is a risk index? FRA supplies us with an online calculator, which calculates a risk index for potential quiet zone segments. This is FRA's national standardized method to quantify the risk of collision. The calculator considers many factors, such as configuration of the crossings, numbers of crossings, installed SSMs, railcar frequency, traffic counts, and past collision history. Cities who have qualified for a quiet zone still will need to recertify on an annual basis to ensure that their segment's risk index still falls below the FRA threshold. It's important to note that the threshold itself also changes on an annual basis. Changes in traffic patterns, rail traffic, and increased collisions could impact whether a city can maintain its quiet zone. I'll get to this later when we discuss scenarios, but this moving target dynamic of the FRA threshold is the main reason why staff recommends achieving a risk index at least 90% of the FRA threshold or lower. As mentioned, we've been working on projects installing SSMs. This is a slide to highlight work done as part of the Fourth and Fifth Ave railroad grade crossings projects. This is a joint effort between city and Caltrain. California Public Utilities Commission, or CPUC, provided 100% of the funding under the Railroad Highway Grade Crossing Program, Section 130, total of $7 million. City is currently in construction for our part of it. Caltrain just received bids earlier this month, and will start their construction this fall and finish their work fall of 2024. These next slides show updated scenarios for train quiet zone qualification. Staff used this information, including the risk index, to help determine which SSM project should be implemented to meet qualification. As you can see, even with Fourth and Fifth completed, we are above the FRA threshold at 121%. As previously mentioned, the lower the risk index, the better. Risk index under 100% qualifies us for a train quiet zone, but ideally, our goal is 90% of the FRA threshold. Staff then explored implementing additional four-quadrant gates at other crossings. We found scenarios that would allow us to meet the FRA threshold, but the cost and implementation timeline for four-quadrant gates are prohibitive.
Can you mind if I ask a quick question? Is the FRA threshold determined at each crossing or collectively?
The FRA threshold is determined based on the segment that is proposed.
Okay. And so the 120% is our current conditions of just the Fourth and Fifth or all crossings?
It is for the entire length, quiet zone for the city, citywide.
I see. Okay. It's collective. It is collective. Okay. I just wanted to make sure that we were tracking on that. Thank you.
Okay. Staff then explored implementing additional four-quadrant gates at other crossings. We found scenarios that would allow us to meet the FRA threshold, but the cost and implementation timelines for four-quadrant gates are prohibitive.
Our musical interlude has begun.
We then...
Okay, thank you. Please continue.
We then looked at medians at all the at-grade crossings. Unfortunately, due to existing driveways and conflicts, the only at-grade crossings where a median could be installed would be Bellevue Ave. Lastly, staff looked into closures and found that potential closures at Villa Terrace and/or Bellevue Avenue should be further studied, because at first glance, some of these scenarios meet the risk index threshold, have attractive estimated costs, and allow for faster implementation. But as discussed, closures can be disruptive to the neighborhood and communities, so we initiated a more thorough traffic study to fully understand impacts. Traffic Study. We completed this study this year with the following objectives. Evaluate SSM alternatives at Villa Terrace and East Bellevue Ave at-grade crossings. Study potential impacts of SSM alternatives on traffic circulation, transit, walking, bicycling, and emergency services. Consideration of engineering feasibility and cost. And ultimately, recommendation of SSMs to be implemented as part of the city's train quiet zone effort. Here is a good figure showing what the traffic study evaluated. Large red circles are railroad crossings studied, which include Villa Terrace and East Bellevue Ave. Smaller orange circles are railroad crossings likely to be impacted by the recirculated traffic flows, peninsula, and poplar. The traffic study also modeled changes in traffic conditions at an additional 11 study intersections, shown in blue. We conducted an alternatives analysis process that considered risk index and initial traffic modeling results, and were left with a short list of two alternatives. The first alternative includes a closure of the Villa Terrace Crossing and addition of medians at Bellevue Ave Crossing. The next alternative includes closure at both crossings. Comparison of Traffic Study Alternatives. This table only shows major differences between the alternatives. For example, emergency access and transit access would be similar across all alternatives. The study found that alternatives would not substantially increase response times or affect emergency vehicle access within the study area or vicinity. In summary, regarding traffic circulation, the first alternative will result in the lowest impact to nearby intersections for vehicles in the study area. In addition, the first alternative results in the lowest impact to the bike and pedestrian networks in the area, considering the bike-vilivar connection on Bellevue and the connection to San Mateo High School at the easterly end of Bellevue. Based on the study's findings, staff recommends the first alternative for council's consideration. The next slide, I'll discuss staff's outreach approach for the implementation of this alternative. Staff are intending to conduct robust outreach to the community regarding our plans for Villa Terrace and Bellevue Ave. Three main goals. First goal: We know we need to educate the community on the big picture regarding train quiet zone and focus on the benefits to the community. Second goal: We know we need to reach those immediately impacted by our planned projects at Villa Terrace and Bellevue Ave. Third goal: We know we need to reach those in the community who have a direct interest in timely updates regarding our train quiet zone efforts. Target Audience. We would like to reach the target audience through a variety of outreach activities, which include public workshops, mailers, flyers, contractor postings, social media, door knocking, and lastly, the city's website. In addition to installing SSMs, there are certain administrative steps that the FRA requires cities to complete in order to establish a quiet zone. Step one: Cities are required to call a meeting with all required stakeholders. These include the FRA, California Public Utilities Commission, Caltrain, Union Pacific Railroad, et cetera. In the FRA terminology, they call this a diagnostics meeting, where the stakeholders begin the process to evaluate all crossings within the proposed quiet zone segment in order to verify that all crossings conform to federal, state, and railroad requirements. Step two: Cities are required to issue a notice of intent to establish a quiet zone to the FRA and all required stakeholders. This triggers a 60-day comment period for all stakeholders to submit comments. Step three: Cities are required to respond to all comments and share comments with the FRA. This could include implementing physical modifications to the crossings as necessary. Some of these could be minor, such as striping and signage. Step four: Issue a Notice of Quiet Zone Establishment. This notice documents how the city responded to all the comments and how the city addressed all the issues presented by stakeholders. This notice must be issued at least 21 days before the quiet zone can be established. This slide is a summary slide to show staff's next steps. In the next year, we will focus on finishing off construction for the city's portion of the Fourth and Fifth Project, begin outreach and design for the recommended alternative at Villa Terrace and Bellevue Ave, and start the administrative steps to establish a quiet zone. Once Caltrain completes their construction and the city completes the recommended alternative, Notice of Quiet Zone Establishment can be issued. We... We aim to achieve train quiet zone establishment by the end of 2025. Even after 2025, staff will monitor, will continue to monitor our risk index to make sure that the train quiet zone is maintained. This is my last slide here with our recommendation. I welcome council's direction and feedback on what was presented.
That was an incredibly thorough and well-designed presentation, so thank you, Tina. We'll start with council questions, please. Who would like to start?
I concur with the mayor's comments about the presentation. I guess I was curious about how staff sees, how it may implement information collected during the outreach process and whether there will be an opportunity to share that with council or like the next time this might come before council.
If I can, so we, as Aaliyah Mitch Public Works Director, we have quite a few efforts planned over the next year as it relates to complete streets, as it relates to complete streets in North Central. So we've taken an integrative approach to communication. So this effort based on your direction would be folded into that conversation. We also have another project, the downtown circulation study, which will be funded as part of the next year's budget process. So all in all, that would come into the conversation as it relates to public outreach and implementation as we work through design.
So does that mean, I mean, from that, can you maybe remind me about what that might mean for the next time we might get an update?
Sure, absolutely. So we will be coming back to you on updates on complete streets in general. So I think we can definitely report back on feedback as it relates to this project based on the direction and update on design and implementation.
Okay, and that sounds like it might be in the fall of this year.
Yes, for complete streets, yes. We are engaging with the community now and stakeholders.
I guess I was just a little curious about the last timeline slide. If we could go back one, could you perhaps remind me the difference between the city fourth and fifth row here and the Caltrain fourth and fifth?
Yes, one second. I will go back to the fourth and fifth slide. To answer your question, City and Caltrain are working on a joint, jointly together to implement this project. The city has a different scope than Caltrain's scope. City's scope mostly focuses on pavement recircumcising, ADA curb ramps, and pedestrian lighting along Fifth. Caltrain will be installing the four quadrant gates and other work as mentioned in this slide.
Thank you. Have we closed an at-grade crossing before in San Mateo? Do we have an example of one and how it feels or works?
Not that I know of, but the 31st and 28th were not crossings before they were created. So for those of you who have been here a while, you might imagine what 28th and 31st looked like before they were separated or those crossings were created.
Thank you. Those are my questions.
Any other questions? Councilmember Hedges?
So I think my main question would be the costs and if you think they'll hold out past 2025?
The costs we have included here were estimates based on the conceptual designs that were completed to this date. We do need to do more work to further the designs, but we feel like we have a good range of what they could be.
And the closing of Villanueva Terrace, what will the outreach look like to the people on that street?
We plan to do outreach, thorough outreach to reach all the residents in that area. So it would be, you know, as I mentioned, city website, door knocking, contractor notifications in order to make sure they are aware of what is coming.
Good. That sounds good. Thank you.
Yeah, I just have two questions. And really, they're just more formal information. Great presentation, by the way. Villa Terrace versus East Bellevue, is there a reason why we've chosen one over the other to close? Or is that a little bit fluid? If for some reason we found that there was neighborhood pushback or something, do we have flexibility or is there an actual reason why?
Let me move toward this slide.
I can begin to answer that. It's, a lot of it is volume and circulation patterns. And so that's why the traffic study, if we, if we go back to that slide, Tina, with the intersections that were evaluated, you know, the circulation impacts are assessed as a whole, and there is less volume on Villa Terrace than Bellevue.
That makes sense. And then the other question would be, you know, I think when we started this process, I know when we started this process, we didn't have any of B Street closed. And now that we've made that a more permanent fixture, I know we're looking at our downtown circulation plan as well. Is there a possibility at some point that we might want to close one of the downtown crossings? If we, you know, for redeveloping the flow anyways and, you know, B Street is going to be permanently closed, I kind of almost wonder if we don't have an opportunity there.
We could take that into consideration in terms of options for the downtown circulation assessment. You know, part of the focus on that is to evaluate the use of the public right of way as it relates to enhancing the pedestrian experience bicycle, the bicycle network. We can, let us go back and assess if that, if that might be something that makes sense from like a feasible perspective that relates to circulation.
Yep. It just, you know, it occurs to me that, I don't drive downtown almost at all, I usually walk, but when I, every once in a while, I'll have to drive downtown. Now with the closures on B Street, when you drive into the middle, you know, it just, it's pure gridlock. And I almost wonder if it would make a big impact closing that at this point. So just something to think about.
Thank you.
Thank you again for your presentation.
So I have some questions also in terms of, you know, the, the way that we do the public outreach, and sometimes I think one of the pitfalls that we end up in is, is we, we make decisions or we guide sort of decisions and then present them to the community. And it feels like the decisions have already been predetermined and a pre-planned outcome when we're already seeking input. And so I, there's a part of me that wants to have more like openness in terms of presenting trade-offs when we're talking about the, you know, the competing goal of a quiet zone on the one hand, but also the long time, long-range goal of trying to promote east-west connectivity, right, and accessibility. And so when we're talking about actually, you know, permanently cutting off access, even on a small street, you know, that does have some implication that, you know, in terms of circulation. And, and so there's, for me, there's a little bit of a hesitation in terms of, and, or there's a question, because this is the questioning period, there's, there's a question about the way that we go about doing community engagement and presenting trade-offs in an open way because, you know, maybe, maybe the community will land more on the side of medians than a street closure, right? And so that possibility, you know, might be something that we want to remain open to, especially given that it's lower impact on a number of other circulation objectives, multimodal circulation objectives, and is actually more cost-effective as well. So, so I'm wondering, you know, if that's something that could be considered when we're teeing up the community engagement process to, to seek engagement about trade-offs and more of a range of options.
So are you asking us to then go back and present all these options and come back to council with the feedback? We are at this point, if you go back to the timeline, Tina, and the funding that is available, given that this has been such an effort on improving quality of life, we are rather close with fourth and fifth in completion and the relatively cost-effective measures that, alternatives that we evaluated. So it's a, it's obviously based on, on your direction, but it would be taking a look at this timeline and assessing how to best then come back to you with, with then feedback on options to move forward with.
I'm, I think, well, I want to open it up to the other council members' perspectives. I guess, so I hear you saying that there would be impacts on the timeline. Personally, my hesitation is not about what's happening on fourth and fifth, it's more specifically about the street closure and, and, you know, in terms of the community input process and the value of that community input process for a big, what I consider to be a pretty big decision. And so, so would, if we were to more narrowly focus input on that, in that one area, would that have the same impacts on the timeline?
If you go back, Tina, to the options, so just to recap on the, the, yes, there we go. So just to, to reevaluate on the...
And so, so would, if we were to more narrowly focus input on...
Good question. Again.
Yeah. Sorry. In that one area, would that have the same impacts on the timeline? If you go back, Tina, to the options, so just to recap on the, yes, there we go. Just to, to reevaluate on the... It's like being in a time loop. Our most studious council member is actually in the meeting and watching the meeting at the same time.
Actually, I wasn't watching it. I was watching you.
Okay. Sorry, Aaliyah.
So, so we are presenting here the, the options and assessing which ones would get us below the 90% risk index. As you can see, adding four quad gates, if we look at D, we're looking at, you know, something that would get us below the 90, however, with, with a longer timeframe and definitely a lot more expensive. So our focus was on either, as you can see here, there are two options, adding closures at both streets or at one in medians. Those are the only two options that get us below 90. So as it relates to feedback, those are the most cost-effective and timely options that would get us below the index.
Right, because of their variable threshold. I assume, yes. So I guess, so I think that the, the, given, given that information, it's still a really important trade-off to consider from a community's perspective. And so I guess my, I, my strong preference would be to think about, you know, ways that we can capture community input, weighing up some of these trade-offs. Because, because when people complain about train noise, they don't necessarily think, oh, that, that means resolving it is, is going to be, my street gets closed, or that my, you know, the route that I take to school will no longer be viable, right? So, so I think, you know, when, when community, when community members make asks like this but don't understand what the solutions might be, that's where, you know, the value of getting their input and with full understanding is really important. So why don't we open up to public comment unless there are other questions from council?
It just may be a clarifying question to both of you, and thank you for the presentation. As I understand it, and this project started long before I was on council, but the overwhelming community, community goal, meaning the entire city, was to reduce train noise or have as much quiet because trains impact people all over the city. Is that correct? Yeah, so, well, I think it's, it's, yeah, that, that's my question. Thank you.
Yeah.
I appreciate the mayor's comments and questions, and I was just considering a couple sort of related questions. One is, with regard to exploration of reducing train horn noise, you know, closer to the beginning of this, what, was there an outreach project that, you know, included the public in a way that gave them some of the information of, of the types of trade-offs that the mayor suggested?
Some of this predates some of us that are here, but I don't believe there has been a, besides meetings with council, that there has been, there have been specific community meetings. I don't know, Drew, if you recall. No. There have not.
Okay. And would you say that the, the main focus of the outreach being proposed tonight is to inform the public of council's decision based on this longstanding council priority and the trade-offs that have effectively been made by council with the, you know, the aim to give them a sense of, for example, you know, maybe where they can go if they cannot go through Villa Terrace anymore and, and the, the benefits, the reasoning behind the changes?
Indeed, that was the, that is the proposed strategy, that based on this direction, we would go back and, as Tina mentioned, talk about the educational piece in terms of train horn noise in general and what the implementation of this alternative then would mean to reach that goal.
Thank you. Nothing further.
I think we're ready for a public comment.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We are now taking public comment on this item. I have one request to speak in person. If you are attending remotely and you'd like to speak on this item, please raise your hand. Our first speaker will be Thomas Morgan.
Hello, Mayor, Council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on this topic. I'm speaking as a private resident on this matter. Feedback. It seems like, it's interesting...
Can we fix his microphone?
It seems interesting that we're going and putting back quad crossing gates when it seemed like 20, 30 years ago, he's already had quad gates. That's my comment. And then after just seeing the presentation, I just kind of had two questions about projects in this area that may or may not impact this, and that would be closing of the Poplar off-ramp and any redesign of Peninsula and how that might impact the proposed solutions and if something were to happen during construction, like what are the options to keep it going? Because it would suck to be two or three years into a project, some new information comes up and then we have to redo the whole plan. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, we have no further requests for public comment.
Thank you so much. Okay, so we'll close public comment, and this is the time for council deliberation. Who would like to start? Councilmember Hedges?
I wrote down before your presentation started that I didn't want to close any, any streets through, way through Caltrain, but I think you've made the case that, given the responses from the residents, and I don't want to close two, but given the response from the residents on Telenova, would probably be an overall good thing for the city to go forward with this. I assume that... I assume that when you're knocking on doors, they're keeping records in some fashion when people are talking to them, and I assume they would be asked a trade-off question. If we lower the train noise, would you be okay with closing the, the, the crossing at, on the Terra Villa or Villa Terrace with it? So those are my comments for right now.
I am very much in support of the recommendation that you're making, understanding that there is a lot of outreach to be done. And I think we have to be very sensitive about the outreach that's done and incorporate all the, the questions that might, you know, come up and do it in individual as well as group settings. But I think the overall goal for having a quiet zone has been a very important city priority for a long, long time. And we need to work toward that and understand the, what the difficulties might be to the people who live nearby the street that's being closed and really focus on addressing those, but not giving up the overall goal. And I, from a cost perspective, from a quality of life perspective, I think the recommendation you've made is the best one. Thank you.
Through the mayor, thank you for the presentation. I think, I think in general, I agree with the deputy mayor's comments, but I do appreciate the mayor's questions, and I, and I do think they bring up a larger issue that we may be still working through, which is that I, I think, it, it seems to me that there may be an opportunity going forward to involve the public with our outreach and engagement earlier in the process on some of these projects and priorities. So that, as, as I think the mayor put it, we're not only coming to them after a lot of decisions have been made. I, I think this is especially, you know, concerning, given the experience this council and the previous council has seen with the North Central Bike Lane Project, and the fact that this is in that same, you know, in, in a similar area is, is unfortunate. I, I think, you know, this is a project, as the deputy mayor mentioned, that's, that we've been working on for some time, and we've clearly already set a number of pieces together and, and things are in motion, and, and we're being asked to make the best, you know, decision to continue the ultimate goal. And so in that spirit, I, I feel that staff has made a compelling case for alternative one, and I, I think I'm in support of that this time. But I just, I, I do, I do feel that it would feel better to support that, having felt that the public got an opportunity to truly weigh in on the trade-offs of, of a decision like this. And I hope that we can consider ways to do that going forward. Thank you.
I think your proposal is the best proposal, and I support moving forward with it. I do concur with both Mayor Lee and council member Lorraine that we, we should try to do more outreach for the next time. But I feel as though we've made the progress at this, that we should move forward with it. That's my, my read on things. I, I do know North Central does have concerns, especially with the bike lanes, and I would like to make sure that we don't find ourselves back in that situation again. So I, I recognize and echo what both of you say about making sure that we do, you know, as much outreach as possible upfront. But that said, I, I do support us moving forward with the proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I, I think I'm with, with, you know, strong reservations in terms of the, you know, this is a well-researched proposal that's strongly evidenced by a lot of work and, and many thousands of hours from our staff over, what is it, since 2017? So my, you know, my position is that I, I support going to the community and getting input and, and pivoting if we need to. If the community doesn't, doesn't support a trade-off, including street closures, then, you know, then for me, that's a really important piece of information that maybe, you know, the marginal benefit of, of sound reduction is, is maybe not as important as, as maintaining existing circulation goals. So, so if those are, if that's the outcome of this community input process, then I think that we, you know, we would do right by the community by listening. But we won't know until we go out and see. So it really, it's on us to, to present the trade-offs and gather the community input and, and act accordingly. So I support us moving forward and remaining open and doing a great job with our, with our outreach process. So we are a little bit behind if we can keep moving forward. Okay?
No, in hearing what Adam said, I had not taken into consideration what has happened in North Central with the bike lanes. And I think we got to move forward with this with that in mind and be very thoughtful of what the people in the community there, because anytime you close off one access, it throws the traffic somewhere else. So the people in the area really need to be consulted.
Okay. Do you have what you need from us?
If I can clarify, what I heard the majority of you, both of you all saying is we to move forward with the process of the alternative we're recommending, but to do so with the public engagement piece as it relates to the overall arching goal of reducing train horn noise for everyone. I think that's what I heard generally. Okay, great.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we now need to move into our second item of the special meeting agenda, which is a closed session and public employee appointment of our city manager. Before we move into closed session, Deputy Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
Madam Mayor, we have no requests to speak on this item.
Okay, so we will reconvene shortly after our closed session.